All right, we're going to call this workshop to order. It is going to be just the three of us this evening. Karen, could you note roll call, please? And ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Leadership.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as our own.
We do have an open forum planned this evening, but I am -- it does not look like we have anybody in attendance for open forum.
You're correct.
Perfect. Thank you for checking. Republic was not able to join us for the quarterly presentation in light of the coronavirus situation. They have a travel restriction in place. And so, council before you, you have their presentation, and we will look to get them rescheduled at a later date as situation allows. And certainly, if there's any questions about the quarterly presentation that they did provide, Patrick and Karen can help you with that. So we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the airport lease rates. Dan, you want to walk us through?
Mayor, members of council, this is on the agenda tonight. It's more of a check-in, just to see good council feedback on the recommended lease rates from the Airport Commission. Reason being is that this has to go through an ordinance update, and I want to make sure that the ordinance update reflects council's desires for the airport lease rates. So back during the March, Airport Commission meeting, the Airport Commission met and made a recommendation for lease rates for 2020 and 2021 be adjusted by 3%, which is the CPIU from the past year. So that's the mechanism that adjusts lease rates for the airport leases is the CPIU from the previous year. That was 3% from last year. And you'll see in your packet a copy of the Bureau of Labor Statistics report that showed that 3% came from. The bigger change in that as well is also the recommendation by the Airport Commission to eliminate the $280 annual fee. So they're making the recommendation for a 3% increase and the elimination of the $280 flat rate charge. And as was explained to the Airport Commission, the general fund has been fully paid back for all those paying expenses, so there's no more money that is owed to the general fund. The airport fund, as discussed in the workshop, has approximately $100,000 in it right now. So at this point, the Airport Commission felt that they could eliminate that $280 fee. So the motion that they passed is for the 3% and the elimination of the $280. As part of that recommendation, the motion stated that any pass due of any amounts that were still due to the city are still owed. So if somebody did not pay a $280, that amount is still owed to the city. And furthermore, there's no refunds given for amounts paid. So basically, we're stopping at $280, 2020, and forward, and there's no changes from 2016 to 2020. Just looking right here from feedback for council to see if the council's in agreement with that moving forward. If so, I'll order the city attorney to get the ordinance, the amendments fee schedule drafted, we'll get that notice published, and then that'll get brought back for consideration. Right now, it's looking at as an April 13th bring-back for consideration because we have to do a 10-day notification because it's an ordinance update. But right now, just looking for feedback, any changes to that? If there's any changes, let me know right now. Or let me know so we can get that appropriate when the ordinance updated.
Questions of Dan?
Dan, so $280 that they want to eliminate now, when does that typically collect it?
That's been added on as part of the recharge rent once a year at the airport. The airport rent is due July 1st. Those, I believe that, and Sam could probably comment, when they go up, but it's usually June, I believe. That's where the bills go out.
Yeah.
And it's been added into that bill that you're talking June.
So you don't have any $280 fees collected by anybody?
Nope, not for 2020. We do for 2019, or prior years, but for 2020, we do not.
Thank you.
Do not bill.
What was the feedback of -- I'll ask the question differently. Was the Airport Commission in agreement that we would not do any sort of forgiveness of any $280 that haven't been paid? And that those would --
That is true.
They were in support of that?
Yes.
Perfect. Good. Okay.
That was part of the discussion at that meeting that evening.
Right.
And if you recall, I mean, the difference long-term on this in terms of cash flow, you know, the $280 if it's included gives about one more year for it at 10-years-old. So it's an abnormal impact by keeping it on.
I support the rates as proposed. I think it goes a long way in making some progress from the joint workshop that we had recently. You know, I think it's time, I think the rate increase for the lease is formulated, so that's fairly straightforward. And I think it's time to reevaluate the $280 as we've discussed. So I would support publishing and moving forward and getting it on a future council agenda.
And of course, I would because it's sort of on your permission. I have, I'd love to be able to stay from going on that, but the support is very, very low. I'm a good fellow.
Okay. Second?
I'm a good worker.
Nice work. Nice to close that out. Okay, we also wanted to provide an update on the city's response to coronavirus and current COVID-19 situation, which has been evolving almost hourly here. Patrick, you want to lead us through? I know you'll --
Sure. You have two documents. One is the, some of the responses that we've been taking. And then I'll get to the second one, which is the declaration of emergency. But we met today, this morning, with police and fire. We compared notes. I had a list of things. Police and fire have had a list of things to do. Some of these, we already had started in the prior week. But I'll quickly go through some of the highlights here. I'll probably go through all real quickly. But we're going to keep City Hall, public safety, public works, open for business. Right now, I don't see a reason to shut the City Hall down. We don't get that much traffic anyways, so I don't think it'll be a major thing to keep it open. City Hall is decontaminated and cleaned twice daily by staff. Disinfected countertops and the handles on the doors using a CDC recommended cleaner. Police and fire personnel have all been issued masks that will block or recommended for the COVID virus materials. And fires canceled all business training meetings. When fire personnel are called out to an emergency or to a structured fire, whatever, sometimes when they come back in the station, they sit around and talk for a little bit and just, but they're being instructed to go right away so they don't gather and spread the virus. We have suspended the public fingerprinting of citizens for now. As with everybody else, it's heard about the six-foot social barrier to protection. We recommend that to all staff. The police have suspended the face-to-face contract with walk-ins. Contact, I should say, with walk-ins. Sometimes when they have somebody walk in to report, they take them into an accessory room off the lobby and speak with them. They're going not to do that. They're just going to talk between the glass. Same thing with the office. I've instructed the staff not to go outside the office confines and meet individually with people that they can speak to them since we already have a glass and communicate that way if somebody walks in. We don't want them sitting in a room together and possibly spreading the virus. We have created a line item budget, so if we run into expenses that we're currently running to, they will be classified so we can qualify or look back quickly how much is costing us in case FEMA or some kind of emergency preparation is in place where we can get refunded some money that we've spent on preparation or actions related to the COVID virus. Not really hopeful that that may happen, but it's worth at least making sure we separate what we're spending and so that we have access to that information. We, the senior center is closed. It's closed on March 16th and will be closed until further notice. The building department, we're considering only conducting inspections on the exterior of home and not the interior of homes. We're concerned about people walking into a home that is infected or infecting someone that's in a home. We have a little probably more work to do on that to decide how that's going to work. We recommend that if, you know, people in offices often bring snacks, foods, treats, and say, "We don't want that" because you just start dipping your hand in the M&amp;M's and you never know where you're going to get there. Obviously, not shaking hands. We've canceled all events, although there are not that many events right now. We don't have any arts in the parks or things like that. The city meetings, we're canceling the 23rd. That's Monday, and we're scheduled a special meeting for the 16th. We needed some time to figure out how to have a remote meeting. So what we'll do on the 16th is we'll have a dial-in meeting. You will be given instructions to dial in, and it'll be a virtual meeting, audio only. We don't have the ability to do it visually yet, but we will have an audio meeting on the night of the 16th. The only unit it has to be is that somebody has to sit in the council chambers, and that will be me to make sure that people can hear it and it's an open public meeting, so.
Patrick, you're talking about the 19th, right?
I'm sorry, did I say 16th? The 19th, yes. Thursday, the 19th.
What time?
6:30.
6:30. You don't need a special computer. You'll get a packet on your email, but all you have to do is telephone it. We'll give you a numbers and instructions on how to do it.
You're the first meeting you've got agenda on board. You have to probably say they don't want to.
Please. Expand a little bit on that. Say that again?
Is this a go-to meeting like?
No, we don't have. No, it's just a phone-in meeting.
It's just going to be a call-in password. So a couple of things. I know that, important to note, Sam will remember, we've workshopped this in the past of allowing electronic meeting participation. And currently, our rules of procedure do not allow for that. What's different here is the governor's state of emergency provides cities with certain privileges under that state of emergency, and the ability to do an electronic meeting is part of that. A couple of important notes for the public is it is still an open public meeting. Somebody from staff will be in council chambers to have that open presence. Should we need in future meetings to have an open forum, or if you were to think about testimony under like a planning commission, there is still a means to do so. It's just that council, planning commission members, or whoever's hearing that testimony will be hearing that over that phone line. And essentially, it is like we are sitting in council chambers except for we are all dialed in. But again, important to note that it is still a public meeting. It's still noticed as a public meeting. We go through the same process, same rules. And it's only during this emergency declaration period. If we like this format, we can always consider what's allowed under ordinary statute for telephonic communication. Important to notice, or important difference if we were to head down that path is it does require if Sam were to call in, Sam has to be in a public place that the public, and that has to be noticed that the public has to be able to participate. So there's some additional hurdles under, again, ordinary course of business that we would have to meet. But those rules are suspended under this emergency declaration. So if we have questions on that and what that looks like further, certainly Pete's been a great resource to us, and he can be available for Thursday if needed if we wanted to talk further about what that looks like. I just wanted to make it clear that it is only during this interim emergency period that's being declared by the governor.
Do we need a motion? Has that anything to do with start the meeting that we should continue on with temporarily? Having meeting that way or during that period?
I'm not sure if we need a special motion. I think that's something we need to speak with the attorney about, whether it's a, if there's a motion to have a telephone meeting or not.
So we can confirm with, in my previous conversation I had with Pete earlier today, I asked those exactly that question. Do we need official council action to suspend our rules of procedure? And his response, let's confirm, but as I understand it, was no, official action wasn't necessary. Those authorities are given to us based on the governor's emergency declaration. So, but I just think we have to be transparent on, here's why we're doing it, and also that it is still an open meeting, so.
Can I ask specifically, Cable Commission's supposed to be Wednesday. Does Columbia join with Columbus, and is that also canceled?
I don't know what Columbus is doing, but we have canceled everything through the end of the month, planning and zoning, anything else. It probably should cancel, I would think, unless there's something.
Well, Airport Commission did too. We had to save the $25.
Should probably cancel that as well.
And I talked to Paul this afternoon. I recommended that he cancel it. He told our position on the meeting, so the recommendation was to cancel because there was nothing on the agenda that was pressing at the time.
Yeah, I've checked with the planning and zoning, and we have no items that need immediate discussion nor items that are in danger of the 60 or 120-day rule. So we can cancel that as well.
Because the only question I have about this whole thing do is suspend everything, and we still have a pair of bills.
Well, and that's in the next line here. After the first bullet under the city meetings is that the mayor and administrator will meet to determine if any bill payments need to be made prior to the meeting. So if we know there's bills that have to be paid, we will both look at those and authorize a payment. Now, it'll have to go back to the council the next meeting, whenever they meet, whenever that is, to approve. But we'll need to prepay some of those things, depending on what they are. And that's the judgment we'll make.
Do we also expect that for Thursday's meeting, most of the consent agenda bills that we would have paid on Monday, we're going to pick that up on the Thursday special meeting?
They are complete, and they will be on the agenda for Thursday.
Perfect. So it's really just if there was, for some reason, if we had additional meeting disruption in April, that would fall into place.
Correct.
But I think also, my goal is that we are, if we're not meeting in person in April, that we're at least meeting telephonically in April, just because I feel like we've got to keep business going. And so I'm okay having this pause during the month of rest of March, especially if we're going to pick up a special meeting on Thursday. But then I think we've got to get right back to our ordinary meeting sequence and try to make it the new normal as much as possible.
Yeah, and part of canceling the meetings, not only because you don't, the virus is pretty active now. It's really to give us time to figure out how to put it all together to, for the telephone stuff, we need, I mean, it jumped on us like everybody else, so we just need a little bit of background on how to have a telephone meeting and arrange it for each, if we go into April, arrange that for each committee that has to meet in April. Going forward, like I said earlier, all citizen-in-person meetings are canceled. Staff and elected officials should try to do everything by phone or email. I just mentioned that the board, all boards and commission meetings are canceled through the end of the month. Remote participation will be considered for April. Council and board commission meetings, if necessary. On this back page, all training has been suspended until June 1st. Non-essential in-state training until May 1st. We'll extend those dates if necessary or make exceptions as necessary, depending on what the circumstances of that, of wherever that happens. We have some employment issues that we're going to have to start to work around, possibly. Right now, if we have employees that are coming back from vacation, come out of the country, which I don't think we have any that I know of, they would have to stay home for 14 days. Employees who need to quarantine or shelter in place will be considered to work from home on a case-to-case basis. We are looking internally about how we would have people work from home and what mechanics we need, what kind of things we need to have them do that. Part of that's not only if they have the virus or are quarantined, but that's if there's some issues with daycare and childcare that has become, since schools have been canceled and bars and restaurants and all, there may be some difficulties there. Employees who cannot come back to work for CDC protocols and are not able to work from home will be allowed to use sick time, sick leave, vacation, one for their way to work. If they run out of time, they'll be able to go into negative balances between now and April 1st at least. And we'll reconsider it as we go on. I've been in contact with the League of Minnesota Cities. They are also, have drafted a response paper on to the unions and things like that regarding the subject that we're reviewing now. So that's a big one. Some of the items, Tuesday morning, we have a Tuesday morning department head meetings. We're going to transition that to emergency management meeting for the next few weeks. Limit the access to just the department heads and anybody who's associated with emergency management just to talk about what we, what the updates are, what we have to do. So we'll lower that group down a little bit to about four or five of us. I think that's about it. So we concentrate. That doesn't mean we'll not meet more often if necessary, but we're a small organization, so communications come back and forth pretty easily. It's more or less a walk across the hall or down the stairs, so we don't have too much of an issue there. We are exploring closing City Hall to all public in private meetings and walk-ins if we have to. Right now, I don't believe that's necessary, but if it gets worse, then we will do that. I don't think, we don't have a lot of foot traffic in the building on a normal basis anyways, so it wouldn't be too bad if we did it, but right now, I don't think we need to do that. We're exploring onsite daycare for forest-like employees. Should that need arise? One of the things that the schools are supposed to do for first responders and the like are to provide daycare because they're providing daycare for teachers or for those students who are out of the school, and their parents have to work. As the police mentioned this morning, well, what happens if we have an employee who lives outside the school district boundaries? Can they still use the school district? So there's been contact made with the school district. Hopefully, they can run that daycare. But if not, we should be looking at some contingencies there. And some of the steps, we'll start looking at those right away in case we have to do that.
I suspect a wire goes somewhere, and you're aware of that?
We'll, I don't know that myself, and we'll explore that as we touch base with the different communities. We've already talked about the school districts. I don't know if we've talked to the Y yet, but that's a good option as well.
They did close to expand childcare options. I'm just not sure what that looks like. Yeah. Potential options you know about that.
And then if it gets really bad, we'll activate the Emergency Operations Center, which I'm not sure we'll have to do, but if something gets really bad, we'll do it. I mean, we would do that in a storms or some natural disasters. It just depends on how fast the spreads, if it spreads, if it causes some undue, something that we don't know of since nobody is familiar enough how this all works, so.
Do we have new territory? How do we equalize?
We do not. This is new territory for everybody. I don't think anybody here has lived through a pandemic. Maybe Greg hasn't, not really. I don't think so. It is new. It's different. I know none of us have ever seen restaurants, schools, bars, casinos, everything else close up the way they've closed up. But obviously, they're trying to cut the head of the snake off before it gets to. And that's really, that's really it. I mean, obviously, if you stay homes, if you're sick, wash your hands. And just be careful. Questions on anything that we're doing?
The building department conducting exterior home inspections only? Is there, is there any way for us to? I appreciate we're keeping those moving as much as we can and not getting backlogged. Is there any way that we could issue a temporary that allows us to come back and do a full inspection once we're beyond this? And maybe that's not even feasible or legal?
Let me expand on that. And so that would be only occupied structures. So all your new home construction, all your new commercial construction wouldn't be impacted by that?
So the new outdoor apartments come to mind, right? If we're in extended period here?
Yes. I mean, we looked for the last 30 days back, and it impacted 31 inspections. And all of those were residential at the time. So, you know, obviously, if it creates an issue of financing issues or something like that, where we would look at it on a case-by-case basis. In some instances, we may go in and do that inspection. It's just more for the residential occupied structures.
I don't want to delay, I don't want to hold all of that up, right? We would like to keep that moving, but I don't know. What do you guys, what do you think about?
Let's not, I mean, we're right there. There may be some, it just seems to me there may be something we've got to skip over to. And what I mean by that, when you're probably going using a master plumber, for instance, and all that, I mean, they have an obligation to get this done, whether it's inspected or not.
Right.
You know, and they know that it needs to get done. Same thing with electrical people. They're state licensed. It's a state inspection. They know what has to be done. They know what the liabilities are. It just seems to me that there should be some, at least for the temporary, some forgiveness there.
Yeah, so what is the state electrical? What is the state doing for electrical inspections? Because that's outside of city, right?
That's outside of cities.
So is the state suspending those as well?
At this point, I'm not sure what their plan is going to be. This is also new and rapidly evolving. And, you know, we're looking into what the impact is. Initially, looking back for what we've done the last 30 days, it's a fairly small impact. But as we, you know, look at the permits that are coming up for inspections, we'll know more here probably by the end of the week.
So we are, you've mentioned permits and inspections. So we're at the very beginning of building permit season time, right? So as those start ramping up, if this were to be an extended period, are we able to up our contract with MintSpect? Or do anything else to help supplement that if we were to end up in a staffing shortage for some reason?
We can. And we've not talked to MintSpect on this specific issue, but in talking with them, you know, over the last few months, they're definitely willing to come in and do inspections when we are shorthanded at times.
Just since that they have availability too, and they?
Yeah, I mean, that's going to be a big key to it.
And uncertainty.
I would expect the construction companies are going to be feeling this impact as well.
Just to give you, Dan, who you actually is. Sorry, you were saying?
Yep.
Yeah.
Once you're all working on site, I'm a big guy where you build them in that point, and I go, yes, it's not an airborne thing, because I think it's kind of a contact, kind of a direct contact issue, isn't it?
Well, it's an airborne within six feet.
A short distance, right?
Yes, this is a heavy virus. So the drop down to the floor is fairly quick.
I hope it doesn't affect our construction issue because it's a big deal.
Yep.
It is.
Absolutely.
And I think that the other feedback was, we'll know here how our neighboring communities are handling it, and let's, you know, kind of gauge ourselves accordingly. So area for us to consider further. Other questions, feedback items?
Are you honest, it's just a curiosity on your guys issuing N95 masks, do we do testing with those masks on or just being issued?
Do you mean are we getting fit-tested for those? We're not getting fit-tested for the N95 mask.
Are you okay with that?
I am okay with that. You know, in talking with our providers for our annual physicals, you're just, it's in the too hard to do pile in a short period of time at this point. And we need to be able to be prepared right now. And so, you know, if that call comes in for service, we've got to react.
And so those masks are distributed now? Is that?
Yes. They are.
The, and the fit testing, is that a tight resource? Is it a limited resource, and who's able to do the fit testing?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Now, we do have, Fire Department has SCBA face mask with N100 cylinders on them. We've all been fit-tested for those. And we've got a pretty large supply of those that we ordered here a little over a month ago. And then we've got those in stock. So I mean, if this thing really begins to escalate, part of it's got an ample supply of those where fit testing has occurred.
I have a little bit of heartburn over the employment section on requiring, requiring testing to be completed for somebody to return to work. My concern if this thing escalates is that the lines for Corona testing is going to look like the Walmart checkout line this weekend. And feasibility, like, yes, we want to make sure that people are healthy when they return to work. But if there's some option for creativity around quarantine period or working from home period or something, I think we should be creative there because I just feel like that requirement might I just feel like that port, that requirement might become administratively difficult and might lead us in, we've got a good chunk of employees that are all queued up waiting for testing and, you know, for some reason, you know, maybe testing's running three weeks behind, or who knows what that scenario is going to look like, so, I think, I'm okay with having it on the language as is, but I think we should continue to monitor that and then be prepared to adjust if we need to do something different.
Yeah, I think this is similar to everything else associated with this issue, is that every day is, it's changing, we're not sure, you know, when the test gets out, fast somebody will be tested up, because we don't want somebody to come back if they're sick and they're positive for the virus.
Right.
So, you know, we have, we have responsibility to try to protect the rest of the, the staff, particularly in something like a police department where if it could go through the whole place all at once, because they're close, so, we will look and monitor those cases, we will, again, monitor some of the regulations we're, we've outlined here and adjust them if we can, but, again, this is all new to everybody and we're just trying to be cautious enough where everybody here is safe and, and healthy as opposed to sick and in trouble.
Chiefs, anything else we should be considering or things that are on your radar, that maybe haven't made it to the document yet, but things you should be thinking about?
Yeah, I do want to just introduce, and I know many of the community already knows, Police Captain Greg Weiss and Fire Chief Alan Newman, but Captain Greg Weiss is the city's emergency manager, and Fire Chief Alan Newman is the assistant emergency manager, so we have been monitoring this literally for months, when we first heard about this virus coming out overseas and when it followed into the United States, and we've been working very hard to, to stay on top of this, we haven't been saying a whole lot about it other than the update at the last city council meeting, but yeah, we're going to be, this will be pretty much a, kind of a full-time job for, for us, monitoring this as the coronavirus evolves, we'll be evolving as a city, getting updates out there on Facebook, social media, and so I just want to let you know that we are staying on top of it, and like City Administrator Casey mentioned, we'll be meeting, you know, weekly if not daily, and maybe a few times every day depending on how this thing evolves, but if you have any questions for Captain Weiss or Chief Newman, they're definitely the ones that you want to reach out to.
What's happening with the word "all this started"? Is there anybody, any word on that, what's going on over there?
Well, just based on, you know, the news is where we're getting our info, and from the CDC, and it's, it has leveled, they've loosened restrictions now, we're thinking we're, you know, four to six weeks behind them, or eight weeks behind them, you know, we did do some things early on in the country to stop the influx of, of people, we've taken some actions, and maybe Italy hasn't, it's, you just don't know until you come to the end of the game, and, you know, and what you, what you, what was successful, what worked, what didn't work, you know, and having been, I, the first pandemic that I believe the CDC has been exposed to outside of, you know, at this level, you know, they had the swine flu H1N1 come through, and so their, their preparations are there, but each pandemic is going to bring its own, you know, challenges, this is, this is not affecting kids at this point, but it's affecting others, that can change, viruses, they do change, they do morph, they, you know, they, they're not static, so, what we're doing and what Chief Newman and I are doing is we do have the ear of the Washington County Emergency Management and also Public Health, we're plugged into every conference call, unplugged in every conference call that I possibly can with State Department of Health. Any questions that we're getting by citizens, I would just say to put out there, that that Minnesota Department of Health hotline is going to be the best answer that you can get, whether, what to do, should you be tested or should you not, should you go to work or should you not, we did have one situation where I used them on an employee, should this employee, you know, and they were very, very clear, yes, that employee's, he's good to go, he's not in a, in a, in a zone that's going to matter, so, use the resources that we have, don't guess, you know, and I would, as, as we heard from the federal government today, buy what you need, there are, you know, and check on your neighbors, check on your elderly neighbors, there, there's, there's many in town here and, and just make sure that we're checking in on them and making sure things are good, so, you know, we've got a, I'm confident, I'm super confident, really confident, that as a city, we have the citizens and the employees in the best position that we can at this time with the changes that we've made and what we know, very political answer there.
Yeah, well, the, the reason for the question was, if you see what's going on where it started, because it would get, kind of gives you an idea.
Where we're at.
Where we're at and what we can expect.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I think.
Hopefully our, hopefully our response is better and that we're, you know, doing a better job.
Hopefully we cut, you know, like Mr. Casey said, hopefully we cut the head of the snake off before it got too big, but now with mass testing, there's going to be more positive cases, plan on it, it's going to spike and, and it's going to cause a fever of, not a bad word, bad term of word, but it's going to cause some angst with people, but it's just like when you, you know, in law enforcement, when you saturate an area, you're going to find more people doing things wrong, more tests are going to be more positive cases, so, you know, we're, we're watching it, me and Chief Newman meet, and have, have met daily for the past 14 days or better even, and we meet daily now, and it's not just phone calls, that's, that's one-on-one, we have reached out to every school, we've reached out to Birchwood, we've reached out to our charter schools and had conversations with them of, hey, what, what do you need, what can we provide for you, and again, these are face-to-face, so getting, getting in touch with our partners and ensuring that they know that we're there for anything that we need, and, you know, referring them back again to the knowledge and the information that MDH, Minnesota Department of Health has, and the CDC, because that's, that's where this is driven, that's where our decisions are made, is based on MD, MDH's recommendations.
We'll see.
Yep.
And I don't mean that for station.
No, right now.
It's, this is a.
Yeah, we're, I mean, as we're, as we're doing, we're learning, and it's, you know, we can just hope that we've done everything right up to this point and we've been guided properly.
Yeah, the other thing that in front of you is the emergency declaration, the reason, one of the reasons we're having the meeting on the 19th is that once this is passed, we have three days, the mayor will sign this tonight or tomorrow morning, but if we have three days, the council has to affirm that, that this is, can continue, so we're going to ask you to vote on this on the 19th.
Okay.
That's why, one of the reasons we have that meeting, the front page is just the where, whereas, is that, really the, the meat of it is in the, in the back page, which, that allows that, you know, number two, direct staff to review ordinances and regulation requirements, operations, civil and legal proceedings, et cetera, direct city departments and offices to support response to the incident under the direction of emergency management, directs the city emergency management director and other appropriate city staff to coordinate aid and resources from surrounding jurisdictions, and so, and then follows the governor's declaration. So, that's really what the meat of this does, it, it gives us, it powers us to do a little bit more things if we have to, it's, it's a good idea to do, again, like you said, the mayor will sign that tonight, I hope, and we will confirm that on Thursday night.
So certainly, since we had a workshop tonight, opportunity to talk about it before we sign anything, wanted to provide an opportunity for feedback and then, you know, we're throwing a lot at you tonight, so this will be part of the official agenda for official action on Thursday, and that special meeting, and again, that special meeting will be held electronically.
Well, I'll certainly be forwarding for it tomorrow, is there any question about that?
Anything that's missing or anything else that we should be either building into the declaration or anything that we should be building into the response plan, I look at this response plan as a work in progress, right? So as situation evolves, we can, you know, certainly have opportunity to consider and change the plan as, as needed, but from my standpoint, I think it's a good working document that touches base on all of the, you know, the major items we need to keep forefront of, and then, just like anything, it comes down to the people and the execution, and I have faith that we have got great people and who will execute a great plan, so.
As long as they're signing in here, they're slows what they need to do.
Yeah, so a feedback for that would be great, right?
Yeah, I, I think it actually, it allows us to speed up, it removes barriers, basically I mean, an emergency declaration removes barriers from the emergency management team to do things that we need to do quicker than having a council action.
Great question.
As long as we removed as many as we could here, I'm happy.
Right, and if we need to remove more, keep us posted on what else do we need to do.
That's, that's, he said, that's the basis of an emergency declaration.
We did talk about setting up an emergency declaration fund, starting to accumulate those costs, should there be expense relief provided?
Yes.
We've kind of started the accounting for that.
Yeah, it's, it's really an accounting mechanism to, to record all expenses related to this, this incident in the, in the, again, preparing if there's federal or state dollars that can reimburse the city for it.
How do we get this out to the public, so everybody out there knows what we're doing, a credit account, but, and even hearing the stuff on TV and internet and so forth and so on, but it doesn't necessarily specifically focus Forest Lake, so how do we as a group that are responsible to the city of Forest Lake, get that necessary for our residents?
I, I think you've got to direct your residents, if you, if you talk to them, which you probably shouldn't unless you're six feet away, point them to the website, we'll have as much information, they can always call us, we will put whatever we can, really, on this kind of a situation, in my opinion, it's really the federal and state and county governments that are really the ones running the show on this, we are, we are trying to manage our portion of that, but, you know, we don't have a health department, we don't have doctors, we don't have anybody that does any of that stuff, so we rely on what the state mandates are, what the state regulations or, or, or emergency orders are, and then what the local county health authority tells us, so, like Captain said, that hotline, that's their best reference, I mean, maybe we'll just splatter that thing right across the top of the website and say, if you have questions, call this hotline, because, you know, and everybody in this room is trying to find out all the information we can, but those guys should know it cold and should be able to answer any questions.
And we'll get the, we'll get the MDH website and CDC website and the hotline up tomorrow.
Yeah, well, the whole idea is to make sure that they make some board with this thing, I mean, if they like it or not, they're going to have to help us comply with this and that's what we're.
The only way it's going to work.
Yeah.
The phrase "emergency declaration" sounds a little ominous, and especially as it relates to what this document means for Forest Lake, and so Dan was going to craft some language to be posted tomorrow, to just explain what is it that we're doing by declaring the emergency declaration in Forest Lake, and then he'll provide links to other resources, because it, you know, for what this, it's important steps that we're taking, but again, it's, it's not as ominous as the, you know, words might mean for emergency declarations, so just clarify, clarify what it means and get that communication out there in the morning, and also the notification of Thursday's meeting. Anything else?
Absolutely.
All right, very good, anything else staff wise? Thank you for all you're doing and thank you for your teams, it's, you guys are on the front lines of this, so, much appreciated, and certainly keep us posted on what you need and don't let us create barriers, but rather remove them, so. Okay, not having anything else on our agenda this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor, say nobody saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed, and we're adjourned.